An invocation. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we could gather this evening and grateful for the opportunity to gather citizens, council members, mayor's staff, to talk about North Ogden and how we can help improve our city. We're grateful for the items on the agenda and please bless it. We'll have good conversation that will be able to make right decisions and do what's best for our residents. We hope that we have a civil meeting tonight and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Thank you, Councilmember Barker. Appreciate that. Just as a reminder to the council and those who are here with us this evening, Councilmember Watson has joined us via Zoom. She had a previous commitment. Let's move into our consent agenda. I think everyone has before them the night's, tonight's agenda. And probably have had it in your possession since last Thursday. After reviewing that, are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed this evening? Okay, I see none. We'll move on to item number two. This is a discussion or an action to approve the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and the July eighth, twenty twenty five city council meeting minutes. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those and submit any corrections prior to the meeting. But if not, now would be the time. I don't see any, so I would look for a motion to approve those minutes.
Mayor motion to approve the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and July eighth, twenty twenty five, uh, city council meeting minutes.
I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Pollard. Thank you, Councilmember Severing. Anything else of discussion? All right, all in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
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 If that motion passes unanimously. We'll now enter into our active agenda at this point in time. John, if you would watch online for anyone who would like to comment. And anyone here in the audience with us tonight is welcome to comment. I would just remind you to please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Please state your name and if you're a resident of North Ogden.
Uh, Scott Barker, North Ogden. I, my comments hope keep under thirty seconds, if that's okay. Anyway, I want to thank you guys for ever pushed hard to get the fence up on our, on the side of our house. It's really nice. Did a great job. It's also nice to know people finally learned the land doesn't belong to us. And no longer had to get the city to mow their lawn. Okay, thank you for that. Also, I'd like, thank you for the work you've done on the project, getting the Barker Park going. I know Blake and Grant proximal worked hard at the committee, Steph on the outside, really, you know, got things moving. It's nice to see. The family's kind of, kind of relieved to know things are progressing. Instead of looking at what have we done? I would say now things may look good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
John, I don't see anyone online. Their hand raised. Anyone else this evening like to make a public comment? All right, we will move on. We'll move on to item number four on our agenda. And our city treasurer, Mr. Casey Hunsaker, will give us a quarterly update on our financial investments along with our interest rate. And we've requested this to be made quarterly so that we can monitor the uh, arbitrage we have between money invested and what we're paying on our bond. So the council can always be aware of that in case they'd like to some point in time pull the trigger on, on a prepayment of some type. Casey?
Okay. See if I can get it to work. Might have to go over there.
You say your, your picture popped up for a second. There you go.
Oh, there we go. All right. Good evening, council. Um, so tonight I just wanted to give you an update on where our investments stand with, uh, meter, public investments. With the PTIF and then where we're at with our bond payments, um, and the interest rate there. So before I became treasurer, you authorized us to begin our, to invest five million dollars with, through meter, public investments, um, public investment fund. Uh, and so those are that. And then we participate in the Public Treasurers Investment Fund, which is run by the state. So on this first slide here, um, I've kind of broken it down. So we, we, with meter, we invested a total of five million dollars, uh, about a year and a half ago. Um, and in the last year, so I wasn't, I was able, I, I broke it down, uh, by year just for the sake of getting a a simpler rate to find. Um, we've accrued a one hundred and twenty six thousand dollars of interest and three dollars, one hundred and twenty six thousand, three dollars of interest. Um, and then we have an unrealized gain or loss, which means that we haven't sold. We still, that's money that's still in flux because of the bond, how bonds work. And we have an unrealized gain or loss of eighty three thousand, two hundred and eight, so that's a gain with a rate of return of four point one eight six. And the weighted average maturity for our meter investments right now is two point five years. So uh, that means that the majority of our, the average of our maturities occur in the next two and a half years. Um, and then we have the Public Treasurers Investment Fund, which is the PTIF, and that's where we keep the majority of our money. Uh, at the end of June, our balance was twenty four million, five hundred and eighty five thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars and thirty cents. Uh, and we had earned, uh, in a um, the amount of two, two hundred and fifty seven thousand and sixty nine dollars and one cent uh, over the last fiscal year. And that's why I did the fiscal year on that. Was because that's how, uh, the PTIF gives us our rates. It's a three hundred and sixty day rate or a three hundred and sixty five day rate. So, uh, it's a little bit easier to calculate it that way. So that's over the last year. So, uh, based on those numbers, our meter investments are performing slightly below what the PTIF is doing. And we, we anticipated that when we set it up. We anticipated that it would perform slightly below or, or below the PTIF for time. And then as, as we grew through that maturity, it would flip. And that's what we're starting to see now. So that, that gap, when I did this report to the audit committee back in January, that was a much bigger gap between the two. And now it's, so it's, it's growing, it's shrinking and growing closer together, closer together. On this next slide, I've taken our cash allocations and I've highlighted them. So the ones with the red dots there to the side of them are all of the restricted funds where we keep our cash. Um, such as the impact fees and the road widening project, uh, is the one in the red bar. And then I've highlighted, highlighted the, the water, the sewer, the storm water. And the solid waste, uh, enterprise funds. Uh, but the, the one I wanted to pull your attention to is the one in yellow. Uh, it's the, the general fund balance. And so I, I did some calculations on that, uh, with that.
Easy. Before we move on, could you explain to folks here in the audience, when you use the term restricted fund, restricted cash, uh, maybe just expand on that a little bit?
So when it's a restricted fund, it's not able to be used. It has to be used with things that are uh, stated by state code. Uh, for the impact fees, for instance, have to be used along the lines of, you know, the water infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure, stuff like that. Um, so the, the widening project is a restricted fund because it has to be used for the widening project, uh, going up the hill. Uh, if that makes sense. Um, so I, I did some calculations with the general fund balance that was on that last slide. And I took it and I divided, I, I calculated what our potential interest earned over the last year would have been from that, um, based on the rate just for the general fund. And so the potential interest earned into the general fund, uh, would be one hundred and forty five thousand, three hundred and fifty nine dollars and forty three cents. And then over there in the yellow, uh, I show what our bond, our tax revenue bonds are. Um, so the bonds for the, paid for this building that we're in. Uh, the, the totals of five point seven million and two point four million roughly. And the interest rates that were, were tranches that we're in there when, as we're paying them back. So with the series twenty one bond, you can see that we're at point nine percent interest and the series twenty two bond, we're at two point six percent interest. Uh, because the series twenty two bond we took out after interest rates had gone up already. And so in May, we make these payments twice a year, once in November, once in May. And in May, we've paid um, just under fifty two, five for the series twenty one and just over fifty three, three um, for the series twenty two. And so if you calculate that together, we paid out roughly ninety five thousand dollars of interest. Uh, but our money that was in the general fund, because it's tied up because we, so we made a hundred and forty five thousand based on what's in the general fund. Does that make sense?
Question though, um, so that's, that you're not talking principal. That's just what the interest is on the bond, right?
Right. So the, the payment, the interest payment.
The interest payment, okay.
So we, we pay principal once a year in November and then in May we pay interest only. So in November, we'll pay principal and interest. And then in May, we pay just interest on the bonds.
Is it like six hundred a year? Uh, total, I mean?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So go ahead. Nope, you're next.
And, and the, the number that's up there, that is the balance owed on each bond, correct?
That's correct. The total, the total is what we still owe. So we owe, you know, just over eight on the bonds. Um, so we, and then we paid, so in November, when I give you the, when I give you this report in January, it will, I'll show you that those, these numbers will be significantly higher because we'll have paid principal and interest. Um, and I, I didn't think to put the principal farther because we didn't pay it in May. So right now I'm showing that we were paying about ninety five thousand dollars of interest, but we're making a hundred and forty five thousand dollars based on the money that's in the general fund that, that we have. So the, having that debt right now is is making us money because we're not paying too high of a, an interest rate. So the future trends and rates, um, so, so currently the Fed is forecasting, uh, according to meter for two cuts still this year. Um, so I would reflect a point five percent decrease in the Fed funds, Fed fund rate. So the current Fed rate is four point three as of January nine. Uh, so we're looking at three point eight, uh, potentially by the end of the year. Uh, I, I don't know. I don't know the thoughts of the people at the Federal Reserve. And so I couldn't tell you whether or not that that is going to happen or not. Uh, but then they also expect inflation to move higher uh, later in the year as well as we see things happening. So that is where we're at. Uh, I feel like we're in a really good spot financially, um, for the city. I feel like we, our investments are performing well. And if we just ride it out, I think we'll start seeing our meter investments make that flip and start outperforming the PTIF um, for the remainder of our, our term. Uh, any questions, Mayor?
So correct me here if I'm wrong, uh, Casey. I just did a quick calculation and it looks like the average weighted rate we're paying on that bond is one point four one percent. Just putting that into comparison of earning four point four percent, you can see the
Yeah.
the positive arbitrage, but there's a lot of people like to be paying one point four one percent.
I, I would definitely agree with that calculation. I mean, two point six is significantly lower than the four point four anyways. And that's the higher of the two interest rates that we're paying. So with the other one that, it's going to bring the average weighted rate down from the two point six. So we're definitely, we're definitely saving money.
Because the, the track by year, right?
It's by six months.
Six months? Okay.
Yes.
It's, it's once a year.
Is it once a year?
Yeah, because there's twenty tranches. It was a twenty year bond. So yeah, every year. And that's why we've asked Casey to do this because each tranche slightly, uh, slightly increases. And at some point in time, if there's adequate cash, you may want to
Put some down the principal.
Pay that, uh, that bond.
Okay. So I, I must have misunderstood it where I got it because I think, I think mayor, mayor's probably right. But I think that it's listed out by six months. So every two are the same. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's Rate changes, I, I believe, once a, a year, uh, on that. So just, uh, and just a reminder, if you do prepay it, your payment doesn't change. And you always have to pay the lowest rate off first.
Which is
Yeah, which is kind of crazy, right? You wouldn't want to pay off your lowest rates. And, and just to add, uh, onto that, um, John has done a good job of this, I believe. But when you look at the capital projects fund, um, that money is committed, even though it's not restricted in many cases, it's committed for things that have been identified uh, that the city needs to accomplish in the next five year period of time. So even though it's not restricted, it's, it's committed.
Yeah.
And, uh, the rainy day fund, which is the general fund balance, is there for specific reasons. That's why it's called the rainy day fund. Uh, I would just remind you that our bond is a callable bond. And, uh, you know, we've had flooding in the city, et cetera. So it's good to have a little bit of cushion, I think.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything, any other questions for Casey this evening?
No, this was good. I appreciate it.
Yeah, he's going to do this quarterly.
Yep.
So you can have a
Yeah, I felt like I finally got my feet underneath me a little bit, uh, with some, some things settling down. So I, I'll be back in, uh, three more months to, to talk to you guys again. So.
Thank you so much, Casey. Appreciate your efforts there. All right, uh, we're going to move on then to item number five, which is a discussion on the fiscal year twenty twenty five quarter two economic development report. Um, Scott, would you like to update us on what's going on economically in the city, uh, particularly with our investment? Our, uh, development down here on twenty six hundred?
Yes, I will. Thank you. And I'd like to, uh, jump in here with John if I can. So
Get that microphone, get that microphone a little closer. Please.
Yes, no. There we go. All right, perfect. So we'll run through, um, just a few of these bullet points for you all. Um, and then I want to show you the placer AI software. So we've made a significant investment in that and we've begun utilizing it. Um, so to begin with, Cherry Days, the event was a great success. Um, we have a few placer AI insights that we'll provide for you on Cherry Days. We have that signed executed contract. Uh, we have everybody's logins are moving. We had a training today on it and beginning to do places of interest. So once you have an assigned place of interest, you're able to run a whole series of analysis and reports on it. Um, with Barker Depot, as the mayor asked, the buildings are beginning to go vertical. So concrete footings have been poured for both the multi-tenant and, and singular drive-through buildings. The contractors continue to provide, uh, refined site grading and then they're finalizing the site plan east of three hundred at this point. So that would be south of Lees and Cafe Rio, kind of west of where, um, the Little Caesars is on the corner. So that piece there, as you go north through three hundred east, the intersection has to shift slightly. The roadway curb and gutter has to shift a little bit. And then there's two pad sites that they're looking at creating on the northeast side. So we've met with them several times. Um, the city, UDOT and the developer have met several times over the last few weeks. So we're, we're moving forward with that. Um, this is the three hundred east update. I did want to give you the Village at Prominence Point updates.
Hey Scott, can you just, I'm sorry, can you back up to the, uh,
Barker Depot?
Barker Depot?
Yep.
There and maybe talk a little bit. I, I maybe missed this. I apologize if I do. Um, is there any, have we nailed them down on the timing of that light yet?
So the timing of the light will need to be with the AFCU certificate of occupancy. So it's sort of related to Barker Depot, but also related to the America First Credit Union on the corner. So it's once they are operational is when the light will need to go in because that's when the left-hand turn restriction will happen.
Happen. Um, do we know when America First Credit Union is going to start? Have, have we got their plans yet?
We have their building permit. Yep. So we've been reviewing it. I'm not sure if they've received their approved building permit. That's a name.
I think they did.
Yeah, I think they're there. I think they've received approval from the city on their building permit, but haven't begun working yet.
Yeah, I know they want to get started, uh, talking with Thane Schaefer, who's the CEO. They want to get started on that. Uh, I know I'm going to be in trouble with you and John, but I have been talking to the developer. Even though I was instructed not to. And, uh, it's, it's pretty exciting if, uh, he can pull off what he's got there on that pad by lease.
It is, yeah.
That'll be, I mean, really awesome. And obviously, uh, till the lease is signed, we can't disclose that for competitive reasons, but
Yep.
And, um, he was very complimentary of the city, uh, in our efforts to help move things along. So just want to pass that on.
Thank you.
He's actually been using us as a model when he's talking to other cities' developments. So appreciate the efforts that's gone in there.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, Ryan and Alexis, both his engineer Alexis, they've been great to work for. Um, they're quick to answer the phone and we talk to them really regularly now. So I thank you, Mayor and Council for recommending that we have regular check-ins because at this point it's just sort of built into communicating with them. Um, the same thing you mentioned about who might go on the northeast of that three hundred east leg. Um, we've seen it in their building permits, but I haven't got a business license application yet. We don't have, you know, approvals yet. So I'm pretty hesitant to say who is coming, but we're excited for the new tenants that are coming on those buildings.
Yeah, when you start seeing those type of things, it gets closer and closer to being a certainty, but till it's built and they're occupying it, anything is possible.
Absolutely. Yep. Uh, so the Village at Prominence Point, we're excited to say the final twelve townhomes are constructed in that island parcel. They also have the trail. Everything is done. So everything on the northwest side of Village at Prominence Point is all completely buttoned up now. This is a screenshot snippet from the Utah real estate website, but there are several of those units that are currently for sale uh, between three hundred and sixty thousand and four hundred and seventeen thousand. So, um, encourage anybody looking to locate to North Ogden. We have new homes available, but they also fall uh, right, right close to or within the governor's proposal on what, um, affordable should look like. And that's less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're not standalone units. That's a really difficult number to get to in North Ogden specifically. Um, but they are up and for sale and constructed and done. So we have the two apartments and then now those twelve townhomes.
Scott, all those are single car garages on the townhomes, as I recall?
They are. They're, some of them are double deep though. Some of them are like a shotgun garage, but I believe they're all uh, single car with a parking stall on the driveway.
Do we know how sales and leasing are going there? I'm a little bit concerned. The developers kind of pulled up and, uh, you know, I understand there's been very little communication with us. Well, I more than understand, I, I know. So those amenities are just sitting out there. And I just want to clarify that we have made it clear to them that we will not issue the building permits for certain ones without the amendment to the agreement.
Yep, and
And we won't mend the agreement till we have the amenities with the timeframe. Is that?
That's correct. Yep. And I asked John this question because I have gotten this question and that was when do we expect a swimming pool? And that's expected with clubhouse two. And the current development agreement says that by the two hundredth apartment building, they have to build the second clubhouse. So they have forty eight apartments.
Apartment unit.
I'm sorry, apartment unit, not building. Thank you. So we have, we have forty eight units as of right now, and then three additional twenty four unit buildings that are coming. Um, that have been tentatively applied for. They were originally applied for and then pulled back, but we've spoken with Jerry Huish and we expect three additional buildings to come in. So we're getting closer, but it's, we're still, you know, half a dozen buildings away from having the two hundred units that would necessitate the clubhouse. We can't force them to go faster. I submitted the moderate income housing plan to the state today and, uh, one barrier that I spoke to was that we have a lot of entitled units in our city. And we can't force the developer to write the check to bring them up out of the ground. For better or worse. Um, we've had commercial opportunities reach out to us on the corner of seventeen hundred North and Washington Boulevard, but no definitive development. And we have had no site plans, no specific businesses. It's more just been communication back and forth. Um, Bank of America has gone vertical. They're currently under construction, will be completed soon. Now, Lock It Up Storage, if you've driven down two thousand north, is under construction on their, uh, north end of their, what, of their site. And then the RDA grant. So to date, we have the cannery, Big O tires and Northern Ice. I'll have signed RDA contracts on the approved contract grants from last December. They're working through their entitlement components to use the funds. We received the first reimbursement request today from Big O tires for some signage. So we'll process that and that'll be the, um, the beginning, I think, of that RDA grant. And then John and I have talked timing that if we don't see some movement on these within the next, like eight weeks or so, six to eight weeks, then it might be time to come back to the council and ask what we do with those funds that are just sitting out there. If we don't have applicants or recipients of those funds who are interested in moving them forward. So I've spoken with each of them. I'll, I'll call them again and see if we can get more of them moving.
I could just add to that, Scott, when you say the money laying around and where it could be used. Just want to remind, uh, the public and council, those have to be used in the area, the RDA area. They can't be
Correct.
moved around. It's limited use in, in the particular area.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and then business license approvals. The majority of the business licenses we've approved are home-based businesses. But on July sixteenth, the planning commission did hear a zoning text amendment and made a recommendation about light manufacturing that could permit some more flexibility in businesses. We do have one that's applied in a commercial zone that is a pseudo manufacturing, you know, three D printing kind of light manufacturing. And I think this would help bring businesses like that to the city, provide a little bit of flexibility. So the council will be hearing that at the end of August or, well, the beginning of August, if you choose to hold an actual meeting on August fifth or the end of August after the truth and, uh, sorry, after the, um, primary election. So we'll see the timing on that. Now, do you want to see some placer AI information? Okay. So the city paid for the software for placer AI, and this is going to take a second to load, reload the map. But this is what it looks like when I first log in. And what I thought would be interesting to look at would be the parades. So we have analyzed the twenty twenty two parade, which is on twenty six hundred north versus the twenty twenty five parade. And, um, play the Price is Right rules. How many people do you think attended the twenty twenty five parade? How many people were there between eight AM and two PM? John doesn't know. John can't answer because he knows. But I just want to know, like, what, what are your thoughts? Okay, we've got a seven thousand.
Wait, which, which year?
So, but if I go over its Price is Right rules, so I can't go over.
Zero?
Yeah. I, I think it's eleven thousand.
Anyone else? Seven thousand, eleven thousand?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Eleven oh one, sorry.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. Drum roll. It was nine thousand. So I think Katie, you're closest. JD, someone should have said seven thousand and one, right? So Katie wins. Um, but what's interesting is the twenty twenty two parade was six thousand on twenty six hundred. And we also analyzed the twenty twenty one parade on thirty one hundred north, which was fewer. It was about forty eight hundred, uh, people who had attended. But in talking to, um, Ashley, our placer AI rep to, today on the training, she said that twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and the beginning of twenty two are weird because they have the COVID effect. So there's a, a little bit of this dip in just entertainment and going out and mass gatherings generally. But it's interesting to look at these, um, the parade routes, uh, ironically enough are almost, you know, very, very similar in the square footage size and between the two. So lengths and sizing, even the, um, setup areas. The average dwell time, this is how long any one of those individual people were there, is, you know, just over an hour and a half for both events. So people are coming and then they're staying there as an average for the entire parade, which is pretty interesting and exciting. pretty interesting and exciting. Um, these are the visits. One parade happened on a Friday, one happened on a Monday. The, you know, these are the two together. So this is blue is twenty twenty five, red is twenty twenty two. Um, almost an identical curve between the two, but this is some of the power of the data is knowing when do we need public safety officers? When, you know, when do we see the dispersment of this traffic patterns? Because it's right in the middle, you know, the ten to eleven o'clock hours really high. Um, eleven, and then by noon, almost nobody's there. It's like almost entirely cleared out fully. Um, the journey routes, so there's, and this is a little bit. The data is a little slow on my, it's faster when I'm plugged in at work or at work, but um, these maps might not work. We have the visits and we have the traffic analysis and a few other maps that come in, but it's really fun. It's creative information. When you're on the explore level, you can click on just existing places of interest. So I've got a couple of those. Um, this is North Ogden Park and some interesting data about North Ogden Park is, you know, the amount of people who come um, visit there. Sorry, I was I was scrolling through. I thought it was interesting, so I was scrolling through it. So annually, there's a hundred and eighty thousand people who visit North Ogden Park, the skate park and the baseball field and the area just above the school. That's probably picking up some school kids, but um, not necessarily. So a hundred and seventy nine thousand people. We had if the week of Monday, July first through July seventh, twenty twenty four, twenty two thousand people. We had the majority of our cherry days events kind of centered right around that park. And then the next highest point was June thirtieth through July sixth, again cherry day bump. Um, with the lowest day being December, the week being December twenty third to to December twenty ninth. But there isn't a week when there is zero people who go to any of our parks. Um, parks data is really interesting to see. You know, when and hours and days and what the traffic patterns look like coming in. This is some of that other data that wouldn't populate on the comparison. This is the um, where do we draw people from to visit our parks? So they're from really all over and you can uh, see zip codes, the highest number of visits per zip code that come in. Um, and then this is one that's kind of fun, just because I think it surprises people is the crossroads at North Ogden. And of course, we have a Smiths marketplace over there and Ace, a Starbucks, um, I mean, I forget several of them, but major national chains that are there. And we have three point four million individual visits that come there annually. I've heard from placer AI that and others that that particular Kroger store, that Smiths is the busiest one in the state. It's the most, the highest attended one in the state. Um, people spend an average of twenty five minutes in that area. Um, now again, this is the highest date and I should have closed this, but what do you think the most utilized day at this area as a whole is?
Day before Mother's Day.
Saturday before Mother's Day.
Just gonna guess before Thanksgiving.
And it's right there.
Oh, I wasn't.
I want to believe it's because all the fathers out there are preparing right for the Mother's Day, but in reality, it's probably all the moms going and picking up all the stuff so they can host in a bit. So, you know. Um, I'll be realistic, but that's what I hope. And then the lowest day, interesting, is December twenty fifth, but they still pick up a hundred and eighty seven visits. So you compare that, you know, you almost want to walk in there on Christmas, a hundred and eighty seven visits. If they're clo- are they closed or are they open?
I can't remember.
I think they're open. And even if it's limited hours, but you could almost count the people coming and going versus seventeen thousand people on the Saturday before Mother's Day. So days to know, days to avoid, um, the crossroads, I guess, but very interesting data. And again, our um, draw, so you have traffic patterns coming in, but the um, the area that we draw from, you know, significant Wasatch back area that we see. So Liberty Eden areas, they're coming over to use the crossroads. Um, Brigham City and then all the way south through Ogden into South Ogden are all high utilization areas of our Crossroads Plaza. So it's fun. It's fun data to play around with. We will, in this uh, explore, we'll add far more of these places, these individual places, but there's some that have already been populated. So you can click on them and pull reports and data from them, but we'll go back in and add, make sure all of our parks are in so we can look at the highest utilization days and that'll help with parks mowing. Um, you can run traffic data on several sites at once. But it's really fun and thank you to the coun- to the council for investing in it and we'll continue to find use cases and bring it forward.
Especially the pool, right?
The pool, yes, the aquatic center. But but it was pointed out today that the aquatic center is an interesting one because they use aggregated cell phone data off of a number of different applications and Bluetooth pinging devices that you have had to um, self-select, yes, that they can track your data. So it's this like aggregate number. Um, so swimming pools and aquatic centers don't always have good data because it's young children who may or may not have phones and parents who like barely stopped and dropped kids off and then left. So like the dwell time numbers might not be right. And just the right, you know, the correct number of people. But we'll try. That was John's first place that he wanted to look at.
And and I I created a point of interest there and it was interesting that the three most common places people came to or went from or went to after. So either they stopped there before they went to the pool or when they left in June of this year was Crossroads. And if you ask Justin, he'd say Little Caesar's based on the pizza boxes. Um, Maverick. And uh, Walmart. So those three spots are the spots that people stop right before they come to the pool or they hit right after they leave. So just interesting uh, information from June of this year.
That's all I have for the economic report. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, council members? Council member down pass?
Uh, the parade route being different, I've heard people suggest that the parade being on Washington is better economically. Is there any proof to that from what you can see? You know, couldn't you see that because people were brought to Washington versus twenty six hundred or thirty one hundred? That's something, if you don't have an immediate answer, fine, but definitely something that we we could ask and try to look into.
Yep. And the data itself would say that you receive like one and a half times as many people on Washington. So we could do it year over year and see if we can pull that data, you know, continue to see. But if it's nine thousand versus six thousand people, then there's an assumed economic bump there, but not necessarily. It might just be more more bodies there because there's more room. I don't know. But more people attended the Washington Boulevard parade than the twenty six hundred north one.
Any other questions for Scott?
Can I ask a question?
Christina has a question online.
Okay, Christina, let's hear from you. Thanks for joining.
Um, yeah, thanks for letting me. Um, so uh, as far as the parade goes, um, does the same situation apply as you were saying with the pool? That the nine thousand people at the parade doesn't include children? That it only includes people with phones?
No, it it does include children. It's just a, it's a complicated algorithm. So she was trying to speak through to us. They have a certain percentage of total cell phone users across the United States. It's a statistically relevant sample size, so they can then aggregate based on the number of actual devices that were there, what the number is based on demographics, um, socioeconomics, all of that stuff. So that assumes number of children that are there based on family sizes, based on all this other calculation that they've done. And you know, take all the data with a grain of salt. There's probably like a plus and minus error for it, but it's aggregated estimated data.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thanks so much, Scott. Appreciate your report. Look forward to hearing from you each quarter at a minimum. So thank you very much. Uh, John, we're on item number six now. Would you like to address the long term plan for park impact fees?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. So uh, council, if you remember a couple uh, in the past couple of months, we've talked a lot about Barker Park and specifically how we're going to pay for it. One of the items that's in the budget for this this current year that we're in is to spend two hundred thousand dollars exploring what we will put in Barker Park and how it will be in, how it will be constructed. So that would give us a set of plans that we could hand to a contractor and they can actually build from. So elevation soaps for piping, for um, all sorts of stuff to make sure like pathways are ADA compliant and things like that. So in order to head down that path, it was um, this discussion was contemplated of talking about how will we finish the park? So we're not just spending two hundred grand to get a design without any sort of an end in sight. Um, so this has been uh, aptly titled uh, a phased approach to developing thirty five acres using five hundred thousand annually in impact fees. Uh, that five hundred thousand dollar estimate is based on um, just our collection this year, uh, which is a little low. But so we kind of felt, or I kind of felt like the five hundred thousand was a good floor to use. Understanding that obviously if we had more money come in sooner, then we could accomplish tasks quicker. Um, so phase one would be the design. Uh, phase two would then be this multiple year um, implementation uh, based upon uh, a phasing plan that comes out of the design. Um, and then uh, yeah, so first phase, uh, master planning, talking about where who, you know, getting some more community engagement, taking that information we've gotten from the Barker Park Committee, from the Build Barker Park Group. And actually getting it down on paper so a contractor can use it. Um, that will give us grading plans, conceptual lays out layouts, and then really importantly, the phasing recommendations and cost estimates, because that will let us know how much of the elephant we can eat each year. Um, and so I kind of put together a simple uh, basic construction timeline. So for example, uh, after this design was complete, uh, which would be impact, so that two hundred thousand dollars we could use impact fee money to pay for. But we could spend two hundred thousand dollars uh, improving the access to the hollows and fixing any issues that are down there. Um, and just make sure that it's a safe, acceptable, um, and inviting place for people to come. And then after that, you could hold the money for a couple of years until you get another like one point two to one point five million dollars potentially. And in that space, you could probably then finish the island. Um, right now, based on our assumptions from our impact fee studies, it's about three hundred thousand dollars an acre to finish a park. And so that's where the one point two comes from is four acres at three hundred thousand is about one point two million dollars. Um, that would provide that learning pavilion, a playground, some parking. Um, you know, there was talk of an educational area. Um, and again, that's part of the discussion for the the consultant is to help us decide how exactly that's all programmed. Um, then you start getting into the larger areas. Um, I put two million for the four acres up around the pickleball, which is east of the house that's still there in the middle of the park. Um, thinking that pickleball is a little more expensive and then the four acres around it might equal out to about two million dollars. And then the largest one is the fifteen acres that's to the west of that home and directly north of the amphitheater. Um, the idea being that there'd be about five million dollars in sports fields. Uh, sports fields are typically cheaper per acre, but you can see it's still actually slightly above the three hundred thousand dollars an acre um, cost. So all in, you know, you're looking at somewhere in that nine to ten million dollar range. Understand that the original estimate for the park was around six or seven million dollars. But um, I am currently recommending some of those things that were planned not be included. For example, you've all heard me say that a splash pad, while fun and entertaining and great, can be maintenance nightmares. And I'm not sure that uh, it's wise to have a a splash pad that ends up being a draw on the city resources in that eight, nine, ten year range. Um, Harrisville has a splash pad and theirs um, has really struggled the last couple of years as far as being able to stay open with equipment malfunctions. Um, and so that's kind of the recommendation is to, with the the blessing of the the um, of Scott Barker and his brothers, um, uh, I totally forgot. It's not Fern.
Peggy?
But no, the other, the you're you're not your grandparents, Ray and Carlin Lorna, with the Carlin Lorna fanny family who own the north part of the hollow or the ground north of the hollow. Um, moving to a soccer field allows us to potentially go out and um, receive some grants and things from SWAT and other groups that may contribute to the soccer facility. Um, so those are some of the things we're hoping for. Um, but here's a a good example of this is not what we're proposing for the park. There's not water and stuff. But I just thought it was interesting. I I threw this into a a a PowerPoint AI generator called Grandma or Gamma. And this was the image they picked when I said island. But I think it is, um, this in some ways is a lot of the concept for Barker Park is the ideas that we've got these different sections and how do we connect them together? How do we make sure that, you know, where where the North Pole activity occurs still functions and talks to the rest of the park? You know, one of the, one of the concepts is that maybe the entire cherry day celebration will move to Barker Park someday, assuming we can figure out parking and stuff, but um, just there's, there's some options. So I just thought it was an interesting picture that it it threw it in as an option. But you know, that island project was, which I think is probably the most likely first phase after we kind of deal with the the trails is going to include, you know, ADA playgrounds, shades, park or pavilions, restrooms, um, some sort of an entry monument, you know, something significant. Hey, this is Barker Park. Um, and then all the grading utilities is obviously a big piece. Um, we do have some options for supplemental funding. None of it has been tied down. Um, but you know, there's grants through Ramp and other places out there that there's potential money. Um, there's donations. Um, one of the things the council has talked about in the past, for example, is the naming rights. Um, or people maybe donating something on behalf of someone. Um, as a reminder, uh, staff has recommended in the past, we not name anything live, meaning if it's a tree, we don't name it after somebody because trees don't always survive. Um, and so we, if we are going to name something, we'd like a pavilion or something like that, that it'd be something physical that could be reconstructed. Um, but then there's also partnerships, um, just like the Build Barker Park Group. I mean, they kind of fall in the partnerships and the volunteer community. Um, but there's, there's a lot of options here to maybe hopefully potentially reduce the cost. Um, but the hardest thing in my opinion is when you have this kind of like initial design phase is to make sure that you're not over designing something. And I think that the original two thousand fifteen Barker plan with the splash pad and the the high ropes course and all these things were really fun ideas. But the cost to implement them and the cost to maintain them, I think, might be more than what we'd want to commit to. Um, uh, so I'm going to skip down to, which is why we're we're talking about future considerations as part of this conversation too. How are we going to maintain it? Um, what's going to depreciate and fall apart? Grass does take some maintenance. Um, so there's going to be a lot of zero escaping and other water wise, water wise stuff going in. And then um, what are we programming the space for? Because in theory, this will be the central quintessential park for the city um, upon completion. And so how do we make sure it integrates into what the vision for the community is? Um, and again, talking about this phased approach, I really like the phased approach because trying to do the whole park in one stab is, I mean, it's taken us twenty three years to not do much of anything. And we, I mean, we've dealt ten acres of the of the forty five. And we have, we're not even a quarter of the way there. And so I think that looking at a phased approach getting some guidance from some professionals who can rely on the information that's been created already um, through the different groups and the different committees and not just abandon all that. I think it'll, it's going to really help us dial it in and get this underway. And I think, um, let me go, let me zoom back up here, but according to this timeline, sometime in the next fifteen years, we could get it completely done. And um, I need to pull up this uh, plan. Uh, just so that we can, we're having a real conversation about the reality of what the city needs, the apparently that's not going to, there we go. Um, Barker Park is down in this area where you can see there's, there's quite a few um, parks that are already programmed or existing. And the Parks Department has identified that the quadrants of the city in most need of parks are the north area up along Long Bench. Um, and then the southwest quadrant down where the the West States development is coming in. And I just wanted to point out that both of those areas, uh, West States in particular. And I just wanted to point out that both of those areas, West States in particular, we've already worked out an agreement, or the council has. With the developer to provide some public space, fully improved. Now they do get to credit their impact fees against it, but that project as an example is right now is anticipated. It will bring in about 1.8 million dollars of parks impact fees upon completion. And I'm figuring it's only going to be eating up about $500,000 worth of park impact fees for the structure they're putting in. So it's a net positive to the system of, you know, a million, a million two, which we could move into Barker Park. Because the other area at the north end of the city that is in need of a park, I think there's another opportunity there with the, the landowner who owns the majority of that hillside. To have a real conversation similar to West States in, hey, dedicate some open, or some, some park space fully improved. And we can either waive impact fees or use that as the, the carrot for the density. So if they want density, then they're going to be dedicating improved park space. And so I think that with those, those things moving the West States Park, the Long Bench Park. That we could, we could really dedicate most, if not all of our impact fee park dollars to Barker Park to get it finished.
John, just to refresh my memory, when we met with the developers up there on the hill. We were very specific in talking about the need for a park. My impression was they were very receptive to doing that. Now, obviously they're going to be asking for some benefits, just like in any agreement, it's got to be win-win. But seems like they were very receptive to wanting to participate in getting the park in that area. Yes, we haven't defined what that meant, but we made it very clear. That when they showed us the plan, there was no park in there, right?
Yeah, the original plan they showed us had no park and we said.
What was the mayor's response?
The mayor said, well, I'm trying to remember exactly how you said it, but the, the message received was, you know, there's, there's about 10 acres of some green space missing here. So.
And I think they understood that that would be the case. John, one conversation we'd had earlier that I didn't see on the report and on your presentation, because I think this is important. I think the council needs to address the issue of unused assets that we have. That are sitting basically without any identified plan. For the use of those. And the money from that could be used, for instance, let's see, you've got it up there, the, the ground that's sellable. Up there just above Mountain Road, just north of 2525 back, kind of where the golf situation is now. We might have a couple of other pieces of unused assets that are unidentified. I think that's imperative to get the council's take on that, because that would accelerate development. Fairly quickly. I believe, and I think I was telling council member Pulver this perhaps. The sewer board has commissioned a study, a feasibility study on bringing that sewer over the pass. And in my discussion with the developers on that, I made it very clear that. If they want to hook into our sewer down on, I think it's 2550, that it's not a free deal. And they responded by saying, we understand that we have committed major funds in other areas for parks and things for the city. So to me, those are the two things that could, you know, accelerate the development of, of the park. We kind of have control over one, which is the ground, unused ground up where the golf.
Disc golf.
Frisbee golf is. I think you've identified potentially a couple of million dollars on the sale of that property.
Potential, yeah.
So I just wanted to point out to the council that I think that discussion needs to be furthered on. You know, we're just going to hold on to assets that are not being used, that have no plans, that we can accelerate something that's very important to the city.
Like, like the parcels we had on, when the expansion right by the, the church on the other side that is just sitting there now. You were talking about putting houses on it. On Washington, on the S curve.
Oh, by Staley's?
Yes, right across from.
Yeah, I think that any proceeds from that, John, are committed to the.
Yeah, under our agreement with Weber County, anything on the Ford, on the Washington Boulevard purchase and, and for the, the right of way.
On the other, no, it was on the east side that we had to take the home.
Yeah, where we, yeah, that's part of it.
That's why, that's road widening.
That has to goes back into the road project funds, so, yeah.
Although we did negotiate with the county to keep a lot of funds they originally wanted back to help us with the widening project. So that we didn't have to put that burden on the citizens. They let us keep the rental income, right, John, for the widening? And also potential sale of the right of way properties that we have to maybe take down the homes if we can subsequently sell that property. They've allowed us to apply that to the widening, which would reduce the amount of funds coming from the city.
Yeah, no, the county's been really good to work with on that kind of stuff.
You know, just theoretically, if we could get two and a half million out of that property. And we could get X million dollars, four or five million, if the sewer comes over. That would rapidly accelerate the development of that park. Is that correct? Am I thinking?
Yeah, I would think if, if we could find some key donors, sell the property and get some of these things, including like getting SWAT involved, for example. I mean, there's no reason the park couldn't be built quick, five years. I mean, it, it actually, we might be more constrained by the construction timeline, assuming we can get the financing in place, so. I mean, it'd be, it'd be really exciting to get that taken care of, get that park fully situated. And allow the, the city to then start looking about our, looking for ways to take care of our roads, so.
So, Councilmember Severing.
So you're talking about that six acres that's up there by the Equestrian Park, right?
Yes.
Six acres there.
That's sellable, right there against the mountain.
I, and I just assumed, just so council's aware, that it's probably worth 300,000 an acre, because it's right up against the foothill. My understanding is that most of the ground in North Ogden is going for 200 plus north. Just because it's, it's a, it's a nice place to build. I will add a caveat, my understanding is that there, that area is not deed restricted. That when the city took ownership, there wasn't a commitment there. North of the Equestrian Park up in the, the Green West Pit area and stuff, there is, there are some deed restrictions there, but. We haven't, I haven't fully run the title search or anything like that, just as a cover my, my butt.
Councilmember Pulver.
So, you're talking about Barker Park, and I was just looking at the map. So is there any plans for on the east side, you know, where there's a kind of a cutout on the east side of the road? Is that just going to stay the way it is?
So I had that included in the four acres of the island, was a conversation about that piece as well.
Okay, yeah, because I think one of the key things, and then anybody wanting to, going to the fireworks would probably agrees. Parking needs to be super analyzed before we start, you know, just making everything green, which, you know, it's always good because it's a park. But I think to ensure that, you know, that, that's one of the biggest things, or not problems, but. I think concerns in my eyes, especially if you start making sports park, you know, the one thing you, you need is parking. And I think that's the whole thing for the amphitheater as well, is that any, anything larger than a few hundred people, you're already talking about crazy parking. So, anyway.
And so I, I misspoke, I had included that in the 10 acres of the hollow, because that, a good chunk of that is. But that doesn't mean that this upper portion, sorry, you can't even see my, my mouse, but it, you know, it's, it's also be considered. Right now, there is the trail that goes through to Oaklawn in that area. But you know, this was what was included in the staff report is that my kind of conceptual phasing of what I thought the consultant might give back to us.
One other question, John, if I understood you right, you're seeking the council's approval on whether to proceed. With talking about getting some RFPs, not committing the money, but getting some RFPs on the design?
Yes. So.
As I've always said, you know, unless there's a reasonable financing plan in place. You know, you don't want to spend $200,000 and then have no hope of utilizing that investment, right?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be the hope is that with tonight, the council's kind of head nod, we would, we would start the RFP process, which would not commit us to spending a dime. And whenever we put out a request for proposal, we say, hey, the, the city reserves the right to just not award this. Partly because the budget is not finalized until truth and taxation is done. And so what we would anticipate is we'd start the process so that we could start getting responses back. And then sometime in the September timeframe, we'd hopefully be coming, get back to the council with an agreement. And an outline of what would be proposed for the consultant to do the work and a timeline for them to be finished by, so that the council's fully aware. And because of how big the contract is, that would be the type of contract that would come to the council.
John, do we have a balance in park impact fees right now? I know once that was re, reset.
Based on what Casey just showed us, we should, because this year we've collected 500,000. So we do have a balance that essentially when we redid our impact fee study, we. We kind of restarted our, our shot clock, so to speak, and so we should have the 200,000 in impact fees plus some.
So that wouldn't come out of general fund, that's.
Correct.
That was my, my point.
So, yeah, because we had budgeted in capital projects, if I remember, the 200 grand.
Yeah, so one thing that we haven't done, that's not in the budget now, but we would then show a transfer from parks impact fees to the capital fund to pay for that $200,000.
Yeah, that's what wasn't in there, the expenditure was, but the transfer in. Cover it out of impact fees versus a general funds. And, and just a reminder, because I know there's people that are, still have this in their mind. There used to be a big discussion about negative balance in park impact fees. Alls that is, is a subcategory of the general fund. That money, the negative was actually money historically back in the 2014, 15, 16, 17 area. That was money that was just advanced out of the general fund to accomplish things that wanted to be done at that point in time. This is impact fee related, so. But when, as John said, when we did the impact fee study, it was reset to zero.
Yeah, in, in the analysis, we, basically they, they said, look, it looks like you've basically sold all your excess capacity. And so new homes will pay for new parks, they won't be buying into existing parks. And I know that's, that's worse than attorney speak, that's attorney slash engineer speak, it's like the worst. Sorry, civil engineer, I should say.
Well, had that money been paid back, it would have been paid back to the general fund, which would have gone into either any day fund or a reduction in property tax increases over the years. But that money was zeroed out and was not paid back.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Pulver?
Just one last consideration, I think with the Build Barker Park, I know we have, I think you had Eagle Project on there. But I think there is an army of volunteers that, that not only is willing, but wants to help. And I think that's kind of a key thing to remember, because I know when I've found what was behind the amphitheater, you know, I mean, it's spectacular. And I think the, the. What can be done is, is going to be tremendous, and I think it will be the center point of, not, not will be the center point, just the city, but the entire area, so. Which I think is the goal.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, I was just going to point out, Christina saw your hand raised.
Thanks so much. Actually, I have two questions. As far as the Barker Perk phasing goes, the soccer fields were near the end of, and I'd love to think that this could happen in five years. And that we have the funding to be able to do that. But I just worry, I feel like we heard previously that we had a soft interest in a soccer field sponsor. I'm curious if they knew that it could be nine to 13 years out, if they would still be interested, or if we've thought that far ahead.
The thought process was because I don't have anyone with a name on, they haven't signed on the dotted line, that I don't want to commit. But that's part of the, the fun thing about this phasing is we can pivot and move to a different phase if the money's there to complete it, so.
Okay, and my other question was really more of a suggestion. And you probably are already planning to do this, but I'm in favor of the RFP request proposal. And when we do. Pick up that detailed plan from whoever it is. I would hope that we could have step-by-step detailed instructions in a way listed out on that master plan. Listed in a way that. We could do a lot of it in-house, I don't know if I'm explaining this well, but rather than just contracting out everything, I wonder if there's a way that we can get that master plan designed. So that we can do some of those things in-house to save costs.
That's a really good idea, we can ask the consultant to incorporate is how can we self-build or volunteer build as much of this as we can?
Yes, great, thank you so much, those are, those are my only two ideas.
Thank you, Christina. Councilmember Dowpass?
I just wanted to second what Councilman Pulver was talking about with the parking. Even though it's not the most exciting feature of the park, I think having the parking towards the beginning of the phasing, which it seems like it's shown. Would be really good, just because it would help for those large amphitheater events that have happened over the past few years. And I think it would be great. And as someone that was involved on the Barker Park Committee, I'm very excited to see. I think there was a lot of excitement within that committee, but also frustration too, because it was such a big thing to try to digest. That we had a lot of good ideas and we had a lot of good intentions, but it was really hard to just put it into, and wrap it with a bow like John has done. So hats off to you, John, I think it looks awesome. And the idea that, oh, oh, actually, one question on the numbers, when I was looking at the packet. There's a, there's a portion of the packet that goes over the numbers of impact fees. Could you explain that? Because as I was looking through those numbers, it wasn't absolutely clear how they're broken out.
So I included this, so this shows, the very first part is, our, in, in the last fiscal year, this is how I got the, the $500,000 number. So we did 56 single-family homes and 31 multifamily units. So there was about $500,000 under our, sorry, let me rephrase that. If that same situation happened this next year, that's how much money we would collect based on our new parks impact fees of $6,05300. It's not quite $500,000, because those impact fees went into place on July 1. It's about $280,000, but I was kind of showing what would happen in the future if we ran those same numbers. I've assumed those eight acres by the Equestrian Park, I put 250 as kind of a low end. Partly because I'm not a developer, there's obviously things that are going to come into play up there, but it seems to be serviceable and there shouldn't be any major impediments. And then these units, the West States, the Century Farms and the Cooperstown are all the multifamily projects, which are, have not started building yet. So I didn't include Village at Prominence Point or Patriot Point, both of which have units under construction. But between those, you can see that there's about two and a half million dollars of impact fees coming in. And so I was just trying to kind of show it. And then the very last part is me, this is how I got my estimates, showing that. That for the 25 acres at 300,000 an acre, we need about seven and a half million dollars. For the 10 acres in the trails, I thought maybe 20,000 an acre, it's hard to know, because we don't know everything that'd be recommended down there. But I, my ballpark was $200,000, and then I just had a miscellaneous two and a half million because life. And so that's kind of where I got close to the $10 million number. And so that's how I, this was just kind of showing my math, because this way it can be verified and Excel did the math for me, so it's hopefully not wrong.
I was confused about the Equestrian Park acres when I looked at this earlier, but now I know what that is. Thank you.
Council, could I just throw out, I know parking is a, a high priority. Counselor, can I just throw out, I know parking is a high priority. You know, you got a beautiful green space there. If you listen to the state, they're really trying to de-emphasize asphalt for parking. I would like to see someone analyze alternatives. Because when you look at that, there's really only maybe four or five times a year where we have massive crowds there at the amphitheater. So I would hope we can look at that and say, okay, what is the real parking need? And are there alternatives that we can seek? Because once you put blacktop on that, and I agree, we need adequate parking for the sports fields and the, and the use of the park. So I'd hope we could have an overall parking plan. But I hate to see that rise to such a top priority when basically at this point in time, I'm a believer is, you know, we make investments based upon need. But you've basically got the fireworks, which probably can't be shot off there for a while because the field's going to be developed. I don't know where we shoot them off, Fire Marshal there.
Probably Wadman Park.
Yeah, probably do Wadman Park. You've got the Christmas event. But other than that, we don't get into massive parking problems. Hopefully we will. We can utilize that more and more. But I, I would just hope that we would look at that because I know that's, and as we've talked about with Eric, putting the parking lots in requires a lot of the infrastructure to already be in place. So it becomes fairly expensive to put parking lots in just because of the infrastructure requirement for the whole park. I'm not against parking. I'm just saying I would hope we further analyze that.
And Mayor, you're, you're a hundred percent right. And I probably should have made it clear on my slides. Every time I mentioned parking, it was parking for that phase. So it wasn't doing all the parking in the whole park. It was the parking in the island and then the parking by the pickleball. And so each phase has its own parking component that would come with that phase was my thought as opposed to the biggest parking lots in that 15 acres. It's also where the majority of the underground infrastructure has to leave with water and sewer. And so there may, for example, when we do the picklebarrow, we'll, we're going to put in a bathroom up there and we'll need to run a sewer line out. We can probably service the bathroom off 2,600. But the sewer line will probably have to go out and it goes down by, it'll probably go down behind the amphitheater and out to Fruitland. Or tie into the line that's feeding the amphitheater right now. So.
What other questions, counsel, do you have or comments you'd like to make, Councilmember Barker?
One thought I've had, and I've mentioned it before, I'd still say we need to be a little cautious about allocating all our impact fees to one park. We did that with our public safety in the budget, our, our property taxes, where we said all our public, all our property taxes are going to public safety. And then when other issues come up, we can't use property taxes. If we say all of our public, our impact fees are going to this one park until it's done. If other parks come up that need to be addressed, we won't have that option to use impact fees. So I'm still proposing that we set aside a portion. And then if nothing's available at the time and we need them all, we can still use them, but let's not allocate everything to one park.
And that's a good point because Scott mentioned to this me when we were talking about it and I forgot to bring it up. But that park ground that we bought from the county at the top of Mason Cove, we have a commitment to finish that in the next 10 years. So we'll need to use some impact fee money up there.
And I think we ought to estimate. Oh, is that you, Councilmember Watson?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, no. Ladies first. Go ahead.
Well, your idea about not paving something to have a parking option, I wonder if there is some kind of field or something that we could makeshift for this upcoming Christmas? If it is that simple, I wonder if there's a way that we can solve that before this next Christmas event there?
Yeah, that's what I, I was kind of inferring is that we look for alternatives. What are our alternatives to meet the needs? There. And I think Councilmember Barker, very good comment. What I talked to John about is if we know that the park in the southwest is going to be handled with the school and Westgate. And we believe strongly that we can handle the north up there on Long Bench with the help of the developer there, that basically leaves us that park that we committed to with the county. And I asked John to maybe do an estimate of what we think that would cost, what we would do out there. And then if that's like $400,000 and we think we're going to get in 10 years, four million, then we'd only maybe press for 85 or 90% of the fees so that we could identify. Because really the only true commitment we have right now is that park there that we bought from the county. So if he could give us an estimate of what we're going to do up there and what it might cost with inflation, then we can kind of get a ratio because you're right, we do have to have the money for that particular park. What else, counsel? Councilmember Pulver?
Well, just, and John already mentioned it, but phasing in the additional, you know, what, how many employees are we going to need? How many more tractors are we, yada, yada, yada? That, that needs to go into the whole overall thought process. Because if we're not thinking about that, then we're just kind of sticking our heads in the sand. So.
Yeah. John and myself had a conversation about that of, you know, doesn't mow itself. So. Okay. Anything else? So John, are you looking for a thumbs up from the council? I think I heard Councilmember Watson say she was in favor of, of pursuing, sending out at least an RFP and then bringing it back to the council.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I mean, does anyone object to that approach? Knowing that we're not committing anything till after truth and taxation and, and this one, I think it will come back with an agreement. So the council fully understands the scope that the consultant's being told, just to make it as public as we can.
Yes, on RFP.
Okay. John, I think I heard that to proceed. So maybe we could move on to item seven then, is everyone had a chance to express their opinion? Okay, let's go on to item number seven. This is the generic agreement with landowners here on the mountain road alignment for the purchase of right of way. Mr. Call?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have received this year about 1.3 million dollars from the county to purchase the right of way for Mountain Road. And that specifically from down here at the 2750 trailhead up to connect into White Rock. And then from this corner up here, about 3,400 north, 3,450 up to the mountain road in the cove. And then from the connection on, uh, totally forgot the name of this development.
Northview Estates.
Northview Estates, all the way over to 4,300 in Weber Camp, or in Pleasant View. Now this cost for all this right of way is more than 1.3 million dollars. And so the end, we anticipate that the county will give us eventually over three years, the full amount to purchase all the right of way. But one thought we had was we could incentivize those who would like to be purchased now. Or we could, we could encourage those who want to be purchased, who want to be purchased now. If they are ready to put infrastructure in, pipes and roadway, that we would move them to the top of the list. The idea being that, hey, if you're, if you're going to partner and commit to finishing stuff sooner, then we're going to work with you because that gives us the infrastructure sooner. And as the Fire Marshal knows, right now we need more ways off the hill. If there's ever any sort of tragedy, we, we want to make sure that we've got multiple places for people to come down. As you can, I mean, if people are coming out of the cove, they can head over this way and come down to Washington, or they can come down 800. It'd be nice to have a third option down 1050. And then that would also help the fire department as they're planning their future station. We're hoping they might be able to locate on Mountain Road as well. So that they get a lot, they can get anywhere on the hill really quick, which will help with insurance. But the whole concept with this agreement is it's kind of a standard agreement. The mayor and myself and Dave, with the mayor, what we're asking for tonight is for you to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement as we kind of tweak it with each individual property owner in small scale to memorialize our commitment, which is we're going to pay them what the, what WACOG says we can pay them based on the, the right appraisals and everything. But they're committing to putting infrastructure in. The generic agreement right now says 10 years. I think this first batch of folks will ask for a five-year commitment. And that's the type of tweaks that I think we'll want to empower the mayor to make is to, to just each property owner will get an individual negotiation, but it's the substance that we're agreeing to. The other component in there is that we have never formally memorialized how much the city pays for Mountain Road, the actual asphalt. So under state law, in my opinion, every developer should pay for 60 feet of right of way. Mountain Road is an 80-foot right of way. And so we have been paying for the middle 20 feet for the past 15 years. We've always just done it as part of the budget. It just, it happens. I think it'd be better to formalize it, especially because when you look at this whole alignment from the trailhead to White Rock is one property owner. And you're talking about two or $300,000 commitment from here to there. Up from, from 3,400 to the cove is two landowners. And again, there's a, there's a commitment to make that connection that I think it needs to be formalized a little better and it will help the, the city with its budgeting. So the idea is that this will allow us to create some agreements and essentially start the negotiations. The design for the whole alignment is almost complete with ESI. As soon as that's done, then we can start the acquisition process with the UDOT approved acquisition agents and appraisers. And I think that we'll most likely focus on this area from the cove to 1050. I've had some initial discussions with the landowners. They seem agreeable. And so I thought it'd be nice to memorialize it in writing and get the commitment for them to put that asphalt in sometime in the next five years, which I think they're agreeable to. Yeah.
What questions do you have of John? Maybe just a clarifying point. When John says money from WACOG, what happens is, is they get an allocation of the gas tax and a portion of sales tax. And then that is allocated out. They oftentimes get more requests for funding than they have money. And so we've been fortunate enough to serve on the Transportation Committee and have that relationship where we do get money from the county. They've given us an initial 1.3 million. And as John said, they're aware of the fact that we're seeking additional funding over the next couple of years. But it's just not like WACOG is this organization that just happens to exist. They get funding for this very purpose to make sure that transportation and roadways are adequate for travel and safe. So. What questions do you have of John? I guess the question he has on his mind is, do you want to allow the mayor, not necessarily this mayor, but the mayor, whoever that may be, to sign those documents after meeting with John and Dave? Or would you prefer to have it come back to the council every time, which is quite delaying and, but it's up to you. Is that what you'd like, John? Are you looking to get a, a motion to approve the agreement with landowners on Mountain Road?
Yes, with those caveats of the, the flexibility for, and it'll, it'll be flexibility tied to the, the timelines and the dates. There won't be a, a substantial amendment of the expectations for improvements or things like that.
Any questions? Councilmember Dalpas?
John, you mentioned the area that would be prioritized is where you're looking at the map, on the map from north, from the cove to 3,400-ish and 10. So were you, you said 1050. So are you saying literally connecting just to 1050? Or would it connect to where the other Mountain Road is?
So it'd, it'd come from this corner in the cove down to 1050. And then this group would, in theory, finish the, finish the connection down. So you could go, you'd be able to go from 3,100 all the way up to the end of the, I totally forgot the name again.
Northview Estates?
Northview Estates, which, and, and just as the council's probably aware, 3,550 eventually connects to Mountain Road as well. There's a, if there's a spot there for the road to punch through as this side of the road develops.
Steep.
It'll be steep. However, again, talking about the fire access and their vehicles, having a station in this area of Mountain Road and the ability to service down 3,550. We are on the, our residents are on the cusp of feeling the burden of the insurance stuff coming out of California. And so having response time in the right category, which is sub-three minutes, is going to be almost essential to some homes even being insurable. So that's, so this in a lot of ways has some life safety implications, which I think is part of the reason that WACOG or the county dollars assignment, they, they prioritize Mountain Road as a connection because it really opens it up. And as you know, over here in Pleasant View, the fire station's right here. So again, as soon as this connection starts coming across, then now you've got two fire stations that can serve the hill. Or if Pleasant View needs more help, then the fire trucks can all get there quicker. But the goal is to save life as quick as we can. So.
I, I'll just add that I, I'm supportive of just allowing our mayor to be able to make some minor modifications as needed as working with these, these landowners.
Is that a motion?
That is not a motion, but I'll, I'll, I can try to make a stab at one in a minute.
If everybody's, Councilmember Severing.
Wouldn't we need an agreement number? Or is this just a?
We, so we've stopped assigning agreement numbers. Ryan asked us to do that. Just, it was causing some confusion on, at the council approval and mixing them in with all the, the rest of the city. So she's, we don't do agreement numbers anymore, but they will, so it'd be, it'd be approving the, the temp, agreement template for the mayor to execute as, as individual property owners are ready to sign.
I'll try to motion if we're ready. I, I move that we approve the agreement template that has been presented by John Call. And as part of the motion, I allow the mayor of North Ogden to make slight modifications to the agreement as necessary when working with the landowners.
For timeline.
And, and I can tie though, okay. And part of the motion is to allow the timelines to be tweaked according to negotiations with the landowners.
I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dalpas and Councilmember Severing. Are there any further questions or discussions at this time? All then in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you. Speaking of life and safety issues, Councilmember Barker, how's the new paramedics thing going? Start July 1st?
Yeah, they're actually running. We're, I should have, if I would have known you were going to ask, I would have had data, but we're running.
Just generally.
They, they are running more than we initially thought they were going to be going. We've shown that there's actually relative, there's good data that this should have been done a long time ago. Like, yeah, they're probably running more outside of our area, outside of Northview's area. Ogden, Weber's, Plain City, more than they're in our own area. So they're, they're busy.
Yeah, this, so pass on our appreciation. This was also another life safety issue that we negotiated with commissioners to get paramedics in our city so they could perform all necessary life-saving issues.
And can I clarify? So I said the rig is running outside, but we actually do have multiple paramedics still in our area or in our city that ride on fire trucks and ambulances. And now they actually have the ability to do their own skills as well. So we got lots of coverage here.
Perfect. Okay. Let's move on to item number eight and talk about Bye Bye Birdie. John?
Hey, counsel. So we've had a lot of interest in the amphitheater this year. A group approached the city about doing a similar. Uh, a group approached the city about uh, doing a similar uh, arrangement to the group that was uh, is putting on Newsies this week. So get your tickets this week, next week. Go see the mayor. In a, in a role outside of his normal role, he will be the mayor of New York City.
Correct.
But.
Is for real?
Yeah. Yeah. It was supposed to be a walk-on part and he has lines. So come hear him do his best impression of a, have they give you an accent you have to do or is it just American accent?
I use my New York one.
Perfect. And so originally they came and said, look, we just want to, you know, use the facility and get reimbursed for the amount of money we put in and any proceeds over it, the city gets. And so mayor and I talked and we said, okay, this, we think we can work this under the parameters. Since that timeframe, they have come back with additional requests that just kind of have led me to think, hey, we need to have the council approve this agreement. They have raised $14,000 from folks, uh, five from the original group. Far West put in $5,000 and they've got some donations from folks. So they're, they figure that they need about 20,000 to make it work. Um, and as of right now, they've, they've essentially got 12,000. Not free, but they don't owe the 12,000 back to anybody. The way this agreement is written is the city would actually be in charge of the ticket sales. So that way we're controlling the money. We would be responsible to reimburse the original $5,000 contribution uh, that essentially one family put up, put together. And they would essentially get that out first, but once we get beyond that $5,000, then we're talking that the rest of it would go to the city. The one ask is that they would like it to go towards a future arts thing. And with that in mind, um, I, in talking with them, they, they seem like a really good, good group. They're excited. You know, the Newsies group is so excited to be there. I think that this might be a good little way to start a little nest egg is probably the wrong word because it's not a massive amount, but to start some funding showing that this facility can operate without city injection of money. And hopefully uh, maybe move to a point where not the same size as Leighton, but have a similar setup where you've got a nonprofit group that just handles the programming. And the city has some say in how it happens, but it's hands off. It's not tax dollars. It's, you know, that, that the facility can just operate. Uh, but that's, that's like down the road. I'm just thinking that having this group come with the Newsies group and others, that this sets up a good uh, way for us to, to see how the facility can work and see if we can get the excitement there that'll make it function. We'll know after Newsies and Bye Bye Birdie. And then there's talk of doing Addams Family in the October timeframe. If this facility will sell enough tickets, that it'll pay for the shows that are going there. And that's the goal of most groups is to make sure that they break even. So.
John, can I ask, so there's no obligation to reimburse the 5,000 if they, they don't sell enough tickets?
Correct.
At this point in time, and I'm putting in a plug here, not, not to see the mayor of New York, but to the community. Uh, they have only sold 400 tickets.
For Newsies?
For Newsies. And I'm sure it's about the same cost as putting on Bye Bye Birdie.
It might be a little higher, but yeah.
So my concern is that, you know, the city's not on the hook because we're not putting anything in for the current agreement we have. It was, you put up all the costs and anything you make over your costs is split with the city. And I agree that it probably would be used to hopefully for a reinvestment to keep things going. But that, that's my concern is I don't want the city to be on the hook. Cause there's nothing in the budget for it, right?
Yeah.
So the 5,000 you referred to that they're looking for for reimbursement, that's only if there's adequate money to do that. It's kind of a first out deal, right?
Correct. Yeah. And, and they're, and the way the contract's written is there's no commitment from the city to put any money into it. So they've, they're doing everything. Yeah, no cash. Yeah.
Cause there are expenses, but it's a little bit concerning to me because these, I mean, I'm so impressed with these kids. The lead guy is from North Ogden. He's incredible. This is a young man, maybe 17 or 18. But they have worked their hearts out and put in lots and lots and lots of work. And 400 tickets for s- uh, five or six nights is concerning to me. So whoever's out there, spread the word, go door to door, get people out. Don't tell them I'm the mayor else they won't come. But other than that, that, that's just the, the concern is how do we get this? You know, we, we want usage. You know, how do we help uh, support these things? But anyway, that was my question that uh, we're not on the hook for the 5,000 if they don't make it happen.
No, it, we're, it's, it's essentially if there's money to reimburse them, then that would be the first reimbursement. And then uh, once we got clear of that, then essentially the rest of the money goes to the city.
By the way, some of the components of the sound system where they use outside the have shorted out. So it's a little difficult because they have to do all the sound from backstage, which is really difficult.
Oh, the, the feet lines have gone bad?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'll ask Bryce.
I didn't either. Councilmember Pulver.
So um, in there, there's the agreement for any extra money that, that does come down, that it goes into a feature, community arts and cultural programs. Is that something that we have examples of or? I mean, I just, just wanted to nail that down. And also the fact that we kind of, you know, say set it aside, but you know, nest egg, whatever you want to call it, that it goes someplace that doesn't get touched for heaven forbid roads, but you know, i- i- if it's, if it's grown from a certain area, I agree, it should go back into that area. So number one, that it's kind of nailed down as to what it can be, can and can't be used for. And then also that it's segregated so that it doesn't get absorbed. I don't know. That's the right word. Anyways, just suggestion.
Yeah, I think it's a good point to have a, you know, we tried to get an arts
Guild.
Guild going. We had it going pretty good until it got dominated by people who had a, an agenda that caused those who were working hard to peel off. So. But yes, councilmember Dalpass?
To councilman Pulver's point, uh, is it too restrictive to say that the funds, uh, excess funds generated are specifically placed for future plays? Because I could see if we say that it's for the arts, you know, that could be pretty broad potentially. So it seems like it would make sense to make sure that any overages are put in a line item that is specific to the next potential actual play production.
Or amplifier.
But I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's restricting ourselves too much.
Well, as John would say, um, a council can change uh, the use of the money anytime they want. It's how many restricted funds you want to, to put out there. You, you heard Casey talk about some restricted funds. It's just how many sub-restricted funds you want to have. Basically it, all excesses at this point in time fall into the general fund balance. But can be restricted. But I think probably that's something as it develops, we ought to probably talk about because i- if, if you look at it, you know, I'll use my accounting background a little bit here, but if it costs 15 to 20,000 dollars to put on a play and Newsies has sold 400 tickets at 10 bucks apiece. And, and I'm, I'm just really impressed. It's really good. So we've got to help kickstart this and get it, get it going because you can see there's a long ways to go. Uh, I think at this point in time, protecting the citizens from a deficit of having to put money out. At this point in time, might be the, the goal, but if it does kick off, which we hope it does, then I, I, I do think it's something that needs to be identified for specific use. Councilmember Pulver?
So when it says inclusive use between the third and 20th of September, does that mean nobody else can use it or they have first right of refusal or something?
So what we've, with Newsies, what we've found is that we work with them, but essentially we, we kind of give them, if you need it, it's your space. But if like, if they're not using it in the morning and there's a group that wants to reserve it to do fitness, then we let them do it. So. But the, the expectation is if they have sets, the sets can be up and in the way of other groups and everyone just kind of works around them.
I mean, that's, that's what happened. We had to change it for the community band. But it's just not the nights uh, the plays are put on. There is extensive practice for quite a period of time that they're using it. But once again, that's what it's there for is to use. It was a bit loud. I did get them to tone down the bass a little bit, but but it's, it's pretty extensive. They, they work for very, very hard to get ready. So yeah, what other comments? White? One half regards to this agreement?
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Watson?
I'll just um, put my two cents in really quick that I um, met with John with um, the director uh, short, briefly. And it seems like it's going to be a great program, Bye Bye Birdie. And um, they have a lot already going and practiced and organized and they just seem like a really great group. And I was really impressed and I'm looking forward to going to it, just like Newsies. So I'm um, also a proponent of getting that money reserved specifically for plays. I like that idea.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay. I see no other comments at this point in time. So on the agenda is we're seeking a motion to approve the agreement for the upcoming production of Bye Bye Birdie. Councilmember Severing?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement for the upcoming production of Bye Bye Birdie.
Okay.
Second.
Is that you, councilmember Pulver, the second? Any further discussion? Seen none. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. Uh, well now in the, enter into council uh, department reports. Let me first express my appreciation to uh, Peter. He's worked long and hard to get things caught up. Still, it's still a ways to go. But we're getting there. So I have seen a preliminary financial statement. John, do we have the sales tax? Uh, we got a sales tax payment and we have one remaining sales tax payment coming in. You can see that sales tax last month was relatively flat. Down about point 72%. If we hit budget, if, if the June payment comes in as expected, we'll probably be up a percent or two, I would say in, in sales tax. Still refining a few things on the money the state nets out of there. But you can see we've collected uh, $4,463,000 uh, against a budget of 4.8. So that means uh, 337,000 would put us right on budget. Coming up and anything above that would be cream on the top. So based upon what I've seen in looking through the each department and their expenses, there are some departments that are slightly, and I would say slightly over budget, have expended a little bit more, but once again, still to be refined. But there are numerous departments. Uh, for instance, the uh, Public Safety Police Department was substantially under budget. Trying to think of the other one uh, that was substantially below. Oh, it was Finance. And we know why that was the case because we kind of had John playing the finance director for a period of time and it's part of what Peter's trying to figure out, but um, no. We, we appreciate it, John, your extra work on that. But we were uh, about $30,000 uh, below budget in the finance department. So overall, you know, and you never know till the audit's done and things are, but it looks like we may come in maybe 175,000, 200,000 better than we budgeted. Which would be positive towards uh, building the CIP fund and council consider what to do with that in regards to next year. But I would commend uh, once again, our department heads who have uh, understood they have a budget and they have to live within that budget. Like I say, there were very few that were slightly over, over budget. So financially, I think uh, we'll be in good shape. But I do want to qualify that on the, the point that till the audit's done and and it's signed off by the auditors, uh, you just never know, but it's looking positive for a good year end and it'll be contingent on that last month of sales tax. June is usually a fairly good month. I mentioned to some of the council members earlier, if you put up the uh, slide, John, again on sales tax. In the six years I've been around, I'm not sure I've seen so many red numbers month by month. You've also heard me say one month doesn't start a trend, isn't a trend. Two months starts a trend and you start getting into three months at a time where your sales tax is down. You're probably in, in a trend, but you, you can see that uh, we've had a lot of months where it's been in, in the red. So uh, we'll see what happens as we move forward. As explained, uh, each department has been given the challenge to have a plan B and a plan C. Knowing that uh, that's the only money that's available. So they're, they're fully aware of that. Any questions, council on the finances? I think if you look through that, you'll also see for those who are interested, the allocation of the funds we have that are committed, that are impact fees. And so you know what funds are really available for any day or unsuspecting projects. Okay, that's my report. I'm happy to answer any other questions. And once again, Peter, thank you for all the effort you've put in. Let's go to you, councilmember Pulver.
Alrighty. Um, so Public Works, um, as you can see, I think the, I mean, I know for me, the best awesome thing is seeing a right turn lane next to McDonald's, but that's, you know, anyway, everything else is, you know, but you know, people that live on 1700, obviously that's, that's their big thing is getting that water line project finished up. Obviously there's a whole bunch of stuff going on for sewer. They're going through the cleaning and, and TV um, process to make sure that all the sewers are clean and, and up to standards. Um, obviously with storm, stormwater now is the time with no rain, except for last night, that uh, getting a lot of the cleanup of basins and getting stuff prepped. And then obviously you've seen some preventative maintenance on the roads, slurry sealed and patching. And then pushing on the uh, the fiber folks to make sure that they do their um, proper maintenance on the roads if they make holes. So um, anyways, yeah, that, and then just obviously stuff that now is the time to being prepared for fall and winter. And that's what they also were doing. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did have a conversation with Dave. It's that time of year where we get emails about potholes and why they aren't filled right. And uh, a lot of those are done with third party. And uh, you know, we contracted with them and we're in line, but I believe they're, they started last week in the city. And so they are starting to fill the potholes and get things squirt around. So as you mentioned. But I know that's, that's been a concern to a lot of residents uh, about getting potholes filled. So. Okay, let's move on. Uh, councilmember Watson, did you want to give your report tonight or did you want us to defer?
Might be happy to give it if that's okay with you.
Perfect.
So I reached out to our HR department and admin and to check in with them. And um, they just wanted to point out that um, this week Ryan Long was um, sworn in as our new lieutenant. And also. And also Tyler Jackson was, um, promoted to sergeant. I was, um, able to attend that event and that was really, um, a neat event. So we're excited for them. And, um, there's currently applications open for a community service officer position. And then Newsies, as we've already talked about, will begin at the amphitheater on July twenty-third and go through August second. So get your tickets online, um, for that. And then I also heard from Justin at the pool, the Aquatic Center. Um, there's a lot of report from him, so I can forward that to you for your information. But I will highlight just a couple of his, um, great, exciting, uh, posts here for you. Um, swim lessons have been successful. Our ramp day was very successful. There was over two thousand in attendance on July fifth. Um, the flick and float as well, um, had a great success with our sponsor, Ultimate Express Car Wash. Um, the aquatics that are employees helped out with, um, the Cherry Days Parade. And, um, they have a management program, um, that is, has twelve participants, um, they're teaching. So that's exciting. Um, the, the pump, uh, skater, is that how you say it? And the pump house is near completion. Um, I do know as well, I heard, um, maybe John could explain more, but there was a pump that melted down this week, but it was finished and completed within hours, it sounded like, of, um, going down. So that was impressive. There's still lifeguarding training happening. Uh, Benny's Boat Race is coming soon, so that's August sixth. And that's usually a successful event, so keep that on your radar. Um, and I will forward you the rest of the information.
Thank you, councilmember Watson. Um, Mr. Call, anything you'd like to mention on capital projects?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, right now, so the, the twenty-five fifty detention basin project has kind of been in a holding pattern with the federal budget being in flux. Uh, we do have an earmark in with, uh, uh, Representative Blake Moore's office, uh, for three million dollars to kind of replace the NRCS grant that we were looking at. Uh, it looks like that is moving forward into the budget. We won't know till October if that earmark is approved or not. Um, but that would allow us to finish the irrigation storage in the park, uh, in that area. Um, the Water Works Experience, uh, has been an amazing success. There's been a lot of folks have really complimented on it. I know it's been really busy. And just again, as a reminder, we, we don't call it a park because if you call it a park, there needs to be a bathroom. And we can't put a bathroom over there because it's right next to the wellhead. And so those are some of the reasons why we call it the Experience. Um, plus it sounds more flashy like a Las Vegas show, right? The Experience. Um, but that's been really good. Um, all of the other projects, the playgrounds, if you haven't been down to Orton Park, or even if you haven't been over to Loman View to see the pickleball and the parks, the playground over there, it's really good. Uh, Orton Park also has received a lot of rave reviews. It's kind of a more modern park, uh, has some fun climbing apparatus for young children. So go over and see that. Uh, Mountain View Park is on the agenda for this next year. Um, and then we are just about caught up, the transportation, or the turn lanes done. Uh, we're working on the transportation utility fee, uh, discussion, um, and analysis. And then just that Barker Park stuff we talked about already. But those are kind of the capital projects.
John, I think you may have forgotten one, Bicentennial Park.
Oh, Bicentennial Park. Uh, if, if you've looked over there, you've noticed that, uh, with the RDA grant, uh, that park is being, uh, retrofit with more water-wise landscaping. And hopefully, in some areas, a more robust duck armoring landscaping. Uh, most people don't realize how those ducks, they eat a lot of grubs and they'll tear that grass up, so, um, but that's one thing. And that will also include, um, a redo of the plaques over there for, that acknowledges, we're, you know, down in that half circle, uh, we've acknowledged those who have served in foreign wars, um, and the plaques were a little scattered because they would add people after the fact. And so we're kind of redoing all those, uh, and making sure that we're, um, gonna make it look uniform again, which I think is going to be really nice for, uh, those families who have had members serve in the military. So, um, I think that's it.
Dave's giving thumbs up. But, uh, I know there's a lot of work going on over there at Bicentennial Park. So hopefully that'll, uh, be more representative of our city. Uh, and I did talk to Lisa Ross Kelly, who is, uh, Representative Moore's Weber County contact. And, uh, they're hoping, she says, uh, meets all the qualifications. But with all the grants that are being cut and all the things that are taking place, she says, until the paperwork's signed and the budget's done at Congress, um, probably don't count on anything, but we have high hopes that that'll, that'll be helpful. Okay, all right. Katie, do you have anything you'd like to add? Yeah, we're gonna, I thought we'd get all these out of the.
I didn't, no.
Peter? Anything? Scott? Dave? All right, now we'll go on to public comments. Uh, just thought it'd be good to, while everybody was here talking, we get that done. Uh, yes, if you'd like to step up to the podium, please, and state your name. If you're a resident of North Ogden. And please help us by leaving your comments to no longer than five minutes.
Sharon Hinchcliffe, and I am a resident of North Ogden.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to say thank you for your guys during the winter. My cul-de-sac, oftentimes this place where they really dumped the snow. And the last two winters, well, this last winter wasn't too bad. But the winter before, the guy that's over the removal came in and removed a huge mountain of snow out of that cul-de-sac so that we could function. Um, and I appreciate that. I know there's been some concerns about, with some of my friends about the potholes. And I know I've hit a couple of them. I appreciate the fact that they're being fixed. My grandchildren told me how much fun it is at Barker Park where it hasn't been, had anything happen to it yet. They love to hike through there. So there needs to be some open space left there for that type of thing to continue to happen. And, um, the last city council meeting that I came to has been quite a few years ago. I didn't realize there'd be so few of us. And I'm glad that it isn't a yelling match like it was then. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments. John, is there anyone online or anyone else here who'd like to comment? Looks like we do have a raised hand. Uh, we'll go with, we'll go with you, Phil, go ahead.
Phil Swanson, North Ogden resident, just, uh, took a picture of the finished right turn lane the other day and posted it out on a bunch of sites and, uh, lots and lots of positive comments. People very excited and very grateful for that to be in. So thanks for your perseverance with UDOT and, and the work that, that we did as a city to get that put in. People are very happy that it's there, so thanks. Good job, guys.
Yeah, and thanks for that comment. Uh, you know, there was a safety issue there. People kept cutting through the, the parking lot and, and, uh, leaves. And it was becoming, I thought, quite dangerous. And, um, once again, uh, we're appreciative to UDOT. It did take a lot of work, a lot of negotiating with UDOT to get them to allow us to do that. And Eric Casperson, our city engineer, uh, was, uh, very instrumental in helping us get that, uh, done. But we're appreciate, appreciative of UDOT, uh, for letting us get that done. Okay, we have some comments online. I think Sarah Lansing had her hand up first, so if you'd allow her to talk, John? Sarah, can you?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Yes, uh, Sarah Lansing, North Ogden resident. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the, uh, extra planning that's going in on Barker Park, um, and hopeful that things will move in the right direction of, um, not just planning, but also implementation. Um, I think everyone recognizes it's been a long time coming. And, uh, yeah, I'm hopeful for the future that, um, everything will go to plan and things will continue even past the planning stages. So I think that'd be great.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you for all your engagement with our folks here and your interest in our parks. You've been instrumental in helping us think about things that need to be done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to Ms., um, Susan Kilborn. Susan?
Kilborn, North Ogden City resident. Just want to give a shout out on behalf of the Weber County League of Women Voters to our North Ogden City candidates who all showed up one hundred percent for the Q and A we held last week. I was so proud of our city. Um, I'm involved in doing some of the other cities within Weber County. And actually, tonight, we actually had to cancel one because only one candidate responded, um, out of five, that they would even show up to participate. So I'm giving a big shout out to my city for their participation. And thank you for those that attended, would have liked to have seen more. But then, you know, I'm always preaching to the choir about coming to city council meetings, zooming in, YouTube, et cetera. So that's it.
See you at Newsies. Okay, anyone else like to comment this evening? All right, I don't see anyone stepping up. Uh, we'll now have council comments. If there's anything the council would like to, talk about, councilmember Pulver?
Um, just two things I, um, you said Newsies, but I think you said the band too. The band's doing stuff at the amphitheater on the twenty-fourth.
Correct, thank you.
That's a, a pretty good time. I think there's four bands, I think they said. Um, and then also, um, just a shout out to Katie and, and others that are doing social media. I know, I think Facebook has over six thousand now. I mean, that's a good thing. And then, um, Instagram, which I think most of the, most of the kids and even, even the wife just focuses on that nowadays. We only have three hundred something. So, I mean, we're still working on that. And we do technically have an X one too, but I don't know if we post to that. But, um, I think we're doing well. And, and Phil said too, that there's cross-utilized, whatever, that word, um, across other, um, public forums too. So, um, I really appreciate that. That really gets to a lot of people in an instant. Um, some in North Ogden, some are not, some are trolls, some are not. So, but anyway, it's getting out there and I think that's a, that's a good thing. Communication is, is awesome. And I think, as Susan always says, you know, um, getting things out there fastest, quickest is always good. So, and then, you know, that one where they connected the trail to, is it Griff? Right? That was a good, uh, warm, heartwarming feel, good story, anyway. So I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Pulver. Anyone else? Councilmember Watson? Councilmember Dalpas? Parker? Uh, councilmember Dalpas?
Yeah, um, the community band concert is Thursday at seven PM at the amphitheater. Just wanted to plug that. Uh, we got a special invite from Jason Hadley, who's the government liaison to the community band. Um, and then, uh, now that I know that you are going to be in Newsies, I might purchase one ticket per night. So we'll see. Uh, but that, that should be pretty interesting. I, I'm very, I am very, very intrigued by this.
So am I.
Just for the accent alone.
So am I. I, I thought it was just like a walk across the stage deal. But whatever, we're good. Uh, anyone else like to comment, uh, from council? Just two things, um, and I don't know how we do this. Um, but you know, we do have elections coming up very quickly. And, uh, North Ogden has historically been pretty good in turnout. But I just want to know if there's any way we can communicate, you know, voting, voting ends, uh, try to encourage voting. I don't know, John, what we could do along those lines? If we can put, you know, a sign up out in front or something like that?
We just had a community sign that would say that.
I knew it, I knew it. I shouldn't have mentioned that at all.
But we could use our message boards to just put out and say, remind people. Like we could move it around, hey, don't forget to submit your ballot.
I think that's a good idea to use those, so. Uh, and then I did fail to mention one thing that was really exciting. We did exceed budget on building permit revenue. I think there was a reason why. A lot of people got their building permits in before the new impact fees, uh, hit. So, uh, but I know that was a major concern we had going into the budget this last year. And I think, uh, we budgeted three hundred and we came in at three hundred and seventeen thousand. So congratulations to our building department. Their hard work there. Anything else? Uh, then I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion is accepted, this meeting is adjourned.